Good afternoon. This call to the board of police today is Tuesday, May 12th. We're here for a registered meeting. We're going to stand for a moment on side. I'll have a quick little... Okay. Please leave us to the floor.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, four, call the board of police.
Mayor Kathy?
Here.
Mr. Pollak?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Key?
Here.
Thank you. Our number one on our agenda is order number seven forty-six, which changes the term of office. Uh, this is the second reading. And, uh, the chair will entertain a motion to either discuss or by kind of only read order seven forty-six.
Make a motion to be ordered seven forty-six by Tyler Cohn.
Do we have a motion and a second to do so? Is there any questions? Uh, please, please read.
An ordinance of the city of Mexico Beach, Florida, amend B one point two five of the state code to start the term of office of city council members on the day of the first meeting after an election, providing for separability, codification, and providing an effective date.
Thank you very much. With that being, I have, do I have a motion to adopt order seven forty-six?
Make a motion to adopt order seven forty-six.
Second. The motion is second. Any discussion? Call the board of police.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Key?
Yes.
Okay, and on the same day that this motion passed, we've got two new council members that we want to recognize, uh, at this time. Sharon, if you would, you may get sworn in and then take your place at the table.
Okay.
Good night.
Can you give me a second question? Or just one? I'm gonna put these side by side so that you don't have to memorize none of them.
Okay.
If you will repeat after me with your arms raised. I, Sharon, call, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution and the government of the United States.
I, Sharon, call, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution and the government of the United States.
The state of Florida and the city of Mexico Beach.
The state of Florida and the city of Mexico Beach.
That I am duly qualified to hold the office under the Constitution of the state and the charter of the city of Mexico Beach.
That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state and the charter of the city of Mexico Beach.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of Group Five City Council, city of Mexico Beach, Florida.
That I will and faithfully perform the duties of Group Five City Council, city of Mexico Beach, Florida, on which I'm about to enter, so help me God.
Welcome forward.
Good night. All right, next, we're gonna have another one that's changing seats and going to the official warning of Daryl Key.
It's the same thing except completely different.
The same one.
Same thing except completely different.
Yeah, you're Daryl, huh?
All right.
Hi, Daryl Key, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the government of the United States.
Hi, Daryl Key, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution and government of the United States.
And the state of Florida and the city of Mexico Beach.
The state of Florida and the city of Mexico Beach.
I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the United States and the charter of city of Mexico Beach.
That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state and of the charter of Mexico Beach, city of Mexico Beach.
And I will well and faithfully perform the duties of Group Four City Council, city of Mexico Beach, Florida, on which I am about to enter.
And I will well and faithfully perform the duties of Group Four City Council, city of Mexico Beach, Florida, on which I am about to enter, so help me God.
That's right. Number one, welcome aboard to our new council. Now... Here we go. First on the agenda is, vast request from two oh one Mississippi Drive. And if I've heard a lot earlier of this letter, is, is in reference to this?
Yes, sir.
And I guess we need to read this before we look at this, or can I probably parrot a phrase? This is, this is a rather lengthy letter.
I, I believe the owner will probably give you the, the short version.
Okay, well, here, we're first, we're gonna open the public hearing for two oh one Mississippi Drive. We now open the public hearing, and those of you that may be here to speak at two oh one or on this particular issue, please let us hear from them. Yes, sir.
My name is Charles Waltauer, and, uh... I'm requesting a, a variance on the property. It's in the correct zoning, everything meets its approval, but the code states that you need a half acre for, uh, three units. And I'm shy of that point one one, uh, of being a half acre. And I'm requesting a, a variance. There's a forty-four foot right away from my property line to Florida Avenue, which is a double, uh, road. And then there's fourteen feet from my property line to, uh, the Mississippi street. And, uh, I'm requesting some usage of that right away in order to put a triplex in there. My wife and I are gonna be primary residences and on, on the property. And we are getting up in years, so we wanted to rent out the other two spaces for, uh, occupants. And we were down here and decided on Mexico Beach because of Hurricane Michael. We had vacation down here a couple of times because my son-in-law was in the Air Force. And he was doing some work down there, and we came down on vacation and just, we, we didn't want the tomfoolery from, uh, Phantom City. We wanted to stay someplace where you could bring kids. My daughter's got some young children, and, uh, we came down here and just fell in love with the community, you know? And I had a accident, and I was in the hospital when we heard about Hurricane Michael and that, how much destruction. We saw all the videos and, and stuff, and, and you folks took a heck of a hit. And, uh, we just decided we wanted to come down here and help you rebuild. I needed some warmer weather and some flat land because I have difficulty walking now. And, uh, we wanted to build an ADA because I met a lot of people in Shepherd that were handicapped, and they deserve vacations too, and I wanted something where wheelchair people could come. And I was so impressed with y'all building the ramps going to the beach. That's so thoughtful, but, uh, anyway, I didn't come down here to cause a problem. I came down here to solve one. Y'all have, right now, a lot of people left, and your twenty-twenty census is coming up. And I'd like to be counted as part of your census, and you need tax money. And I'd like to help with that. And if rentals have to pay a occupancy tax, and I would provide jobs and occupancy tax for that. And the property values because of the structure would continue to rise because you lost so much in property values because of the storm. Most of the places, there's still a lot of slabs and stuff. If you look on Airbnb and VRBO, you'll, you'll find several other rentals, uh, both east and west in the same block area. And, uh, I'm not trying to cause anything out of the ordinary. It's zoned for a triplex if I had enough acreage. But it's short point one one of an acre, tenth of an acre. And I'm asking if, for variance on the right-of-way property because it, it's not being used for anything other than there's some cars and trailers and there's stuff parked on it throughout the neighborhood, but, uh, and there's a, a pump station at the corner of my property. And I would like to have usage of that. Won't be built on. In fact, my structure is gonna be forty feet from my property line and then forty-four feet to the road. So it'll be over eighty feet from the structure. And that's generally what the letter is about, sir.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else here to speak on the variance for... On, uh, Mississippi? Yes, sir.
No, but all your meetings and, uh...
You need, you need to rectify for your name and just for the record, we'll pick you up, Ron.
Rock Creek, four twenty-two Colorado Drive, about three blocks away from where he wants to put a triplex. Looking at everything the city has done in the past, we've already denied people dividing lots, waterside. Even though they can be divided, uh, there's enough room for it to put two buildings. That has already came through numerous meetings here, and it's been denied. Now, to give a right-of-way over and build a triplex when it's pretty much a single-family neighborhood, I can't see that happening.
Hey, is anyone else, before we close the public hearing, is there anyone else that's here to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Debbie Waltauer, Charles is Mike. Um, I understand what the, what he's saying, but if we had bought a slightly larger lot, which we didn't on us, we would legally be able to build a triplex in that neighborhood because it's zoned for that. So we're not asking for anything that's not allowed there, we're just asking for a little space. We intend to live in the community, we intend to help make improvements in the community. We love it. We don't want to do anything but make it a better place for everyone. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Last call for public hearing. All right, we're closing the public hearing, move the discussion to the table. Uh, I think everyone has seen, uh, or heard what they're wanting to do. It says that the, was denied at the zoning board level. So, uh, council, comments?
Do we know a particular reason that the zoning denied it? Or do we have that information?
Uh, yeah, well, I'm... It's, it's short twenty percent of the land volume that it would need. And then again, um, Nick can tell you that within the common land, it's not permissible. They'd have to literally change something within the common, not variance.
We use variances to adjust something in the land development code, but variances can't change something in a comprehensive plan. We have to say intensities in both documents, so they're, they're in the comprehensive plan as well. So this would be pretty hard to justify.
And both of these properties together, this is a pretty small, our plant, a small plant to read, appears that both of these lots together are point three nine acres.
Yes.
Okay, so you get another tenth of an acre, you're wanting to increase the lot in, in the setback areas by ten percent, another ten percent or twenty-five percent actually. So you're trying to increase the lot size with the setbacks by twenty-five percent, which is a significant amount. I mean, if you take and you set that setback, so I'm assuming that if we allow this to happen, then that property line that, that borders Florida Avenue, you're asking for twenty-five feet there. And you're asking for eight feet of the Mississippi side. And I can't really tell. It looks like our street's fifty foot right away from one side to the other. Is that what this says right here? I can't... Fifty foot?
I have a survey if you'd like to see it.
Yeah. Well, all I'm gonna say is that you're asking for an awful lot of property that's in the right-of-ways. And, you know, I, I just think that's out of, out of line for what we're doing there, in my opinion.
Well, I understand your desire to move here, because I love it here myself. It's just a great place. Uh, I'm afraid, uh, Daryl is writing that you're asking way too much of variance. I would love for y'all to be able to get you a duplex store, uh, which you legally do everybody a problem at all. So, uh, again, that's just allowing too much, we'd be opening too big of a can of worms to do this. That's not good.
Anybody else?
I, I have to agree that, uh... A duplex will work, uh, and to allow a triplex, then everything would have to be changed, which is really a lot to ask. So I say, welcome to the neighborhood and build yourself a duplex.
All right, anybody, I, I agree that it's just, it's just simply that you're asking more of us than we're able to give.
Yes, sir.
So, chair will entertain a motion or further discussion?
Uh, what is it called?
Two oh one Mississippi?
Uh, I make a motion to deny the request for two oh one Mississippi.
Second. Motion second, any discussion or comments? Thank you, call the board of police.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Key?
Yes.
Sorry. Okay, uh, next, four fourteen Howard ninety-eight, also a variance request. Let me, we found a chance to review that. We will open the public hearing for comments at four four, four one four Howard ninety-eight. Anyone here speak?
Yes, sir. Uh, my name is Glenn Skoggan, I'm a construction coordinator for A3 Engineering Group, and, uh, Ms. Ruth Yates is the owner of the property is here with me today. And, um, Ms. Yates on that property along with Ms. Willis had, had a duplex. Uh, I have a copy of the previous, uh, site plan that, if I may, present it to some of the...
You may.
Would like to see it. And after the storm, when the duplex was destroyed, the owners had desired to split the lot and build two separate units. Uh, the second and third page there, uh, shows...
Is there one, just one comment?
Yes, sir, I have given one to Ms. Sharon.
Okay.
Well, we're looking at it. You can see what they wanted to do, they wanted to split the lots, we applied for variance, and variance was denied. And so what we would like to ask the council to do is, we would just like to go back to the existing footprint and connect the two buildings together. Uh, that would be built several times. Ms. Willis is aware and is wanting to do the exact same thing. Uh, the only thing that's changing from the original footprint is we are lengthening the house about twelve feet, but it's well within the, the setback on the backside of the property. That was the proposal that was done from there, uh, when they were gonna split them up, and which would have been a beautiful finished product, but, uh, you know, asking for the variance, it would have been two houses, uh, possibly six feet apart when they completed. And so, uh, we just wanna go back and tie them together, one hour firewall on each building, and, uh, we'll stagger the pilings. I've already talked with Mr. Robbie Colen-Colex, who's gonna do the pilings for us. And, uh, because they would have shared, uh, if we was building at the same time, they'd have shared that little pilings anyway. And so he said he can either work something out with the manufacturer, get an engineer, uh, to set it on together, or we could stagger them, and that way Mrs. Willis's piling would already be there. So when her house comes in, it will touch these shapes, and we'll have, we'll have a proper two-hour fire rating between the units. And that's what we'd like to do.
Thank you.
How's your end? There's a picture of what the house is gonna look like out there. Beautiful, they're beautiful houses.
Does anyone else speak? Yes.
Uh, Lance Lawson, Southeast, still an engineer. I don't know, uh, anything about the property, I just noticed that it was denied by the planning board. But this, I just wanted to mention that this, this exact lengthening, uh, going with the same following setback on the opposite side of the property wall on the other side has been approved in the same exact manner multiple times.
I don't know if this really matters too much, but what, when it just, just explained, Nick, correct me if I'm wrong. The various requests is for five point seven feet on the eastern side to construct a home that will not have a common wall. We've already had a public hearing on that, and the planning is zoning. So if, if, if the, if the various request has changed, I'm not sure if, I'm not sure how it would happen.
That's where I made it, uh, thank you. Is there any other comments from, from public on the, uh, request? Okay, we're gonna close that public hearing, now we gotta have a corner. Somebody's gotta help me because what's before us is not this.
I would say, as a starting point, do we at least have to know that the planning is zoning board talked through this kind of idea or suggested this kind of idea? Well, how did that hearing go, or was it just a strict denial?
In the meeting, there was a good bit of discomfort with the two-foot separation. I'm not saying that they would have approved it if it were on the property line, but they didn't seem like they were as concerned if it were on the property line, but they were definitely uncomfortable about it being just two feet away.
That's, that's the first issue. The second issue is folks who may want to participate publicly, if they saw what was in the package, they wouldn't know what's coming. But if this was something that the planning board talked through...
Well, here's my point that Lance just made. We have done this multiple times in the past. The only, the, the difference here with this new drawing, the various, the only reason for a various request is because it is being moved outside of the footprint, but still meets all setback requirements. It's, the lot is so long because he could go out the back and still, so... From a legal, being, being what was advertised, what was meant on, what was discussed... In fact, if we had, if, 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 the rest of this meeting was over, there's some ordinance in there where the guy, where, it addresses exactly what we've been trying to do about the zero-watt line.
It, it, it does to some degree, the, the, where it...
Just gets outside of the footprint.
Where it separates completely, though, is what we're doing within the meeting is on, um, tourist residential, and this is in single-family low-density residential. That's, that's the one place where it...
True, that, that is, the zoning is different.
Yes, sir.
But the concept of, is exactly what we've done probably, uh, ten times.
I'm comfortable with it as, as long as this type of idea was discussed during the planning zoning here.
Is it safe to say that?
Yes.
Was this concept discussed?
I don't know what's on that newspaper.
Well, they're going back in the same footprint.
Moving it to, moving it to the property line.
So duplex, basically.
Yeah, it's just gonna have, like you said, an hour, two walls instead of a one-hour firewall. You're gonna have two-hour firewall, because these houses will have their own wall.
Yeah, yeah. And that was discussed in the planning board meeting. I think that was right, that was one of their major problems, that there, there would be two houses, two feet apart.
In that sense, they're taking feedback from that hearing and making adjustments, that, that's fine. Uh, the, the second issue, I, I don't think is a problem, but Gina, can you confirm that this new configuration meets the impervious surface, uh, limits?
Yeah, as long as the building hasn't changed, I, I would say yes, because it's the old one.
This parcel's a hundred and fifty feet long, it's, it's quite a bit larger than the typical, um, tourist residential parcel.
Anyway.
Anyway.
So, Mr. Attorney, do we, do we motion to deny the request as presented? And then motion to accept this, or I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little confused here.
I would just motion to accept the variance request, but specify what you're allowing in that approval. Because the documents in your package, they...
Well, we need to make this part of the, of the package, Nick, very important.
Got it.
And then the motion to accept the various based on...
And you could reference that at all, like it probably has a name or a date or something on it. You could, you could approve some variance that's shown on that at all. I haven't seen it yet, but I've seen it show as the...
Pass that down. Oh, I thought we had two. Okay, we'll pass that down, just so I, I just want the minutes to be right in that, so somebody reads below what we did. Yes, you got a question?
Yeah, so we're, we're not the old site plan for the way it used to exist, right?
No, that's the new, right there.
So we're doing away with the five-foot, this is that we, that they asked for?
That's right.
And it's going back, so it would be...
They're asking for a seven-and-a-half foot variance instead of a five-foot variance. Because they're gonna go all the way to the property line.
Is this the drawing that shows what you're proposing to that?
So we, we have this one question.
Originally proposed on the...
So now, do we, you're saying, I'm assuming that's your sister, is that correct?
It was, before, it was two sisters, and one sister sold to us as a duplex. Um, and so now Deborah and I, we're working together. Um, she's not quite ready to rebuild, or, and I can't tell her to. We were ready to rebuild, we're about three years from retirement. So she didn't really wanna go back as a duplex, she wanted us to split. So originally, when it went to the variance, it was, yeah, we could split, but we had to touch in some way. That's when Tanya Castro was here. But then, um, they denied, they said, you don't need a variance, so you know, we're not gonna give you a request if you don't need one. So that was what kinda messed up the zoning and planning meeting last week. It's because when they heard that, they sound, seemed like they got a little worried about it. So what we're proposing is whatever you guys approve. If you say we can go back separate and give us a variance, we're great with that. If you're saying we have to touch, we're great with that. We don't care what you want us to rebuild, we just want either a duplex where we touch again, or if you wanna give us a variance where we're separate from each other, that's fine too. We're, we're willing to do whatever. So if you can let us be a duplex, that's great, and if not, that's great too, whatever you all approve. But we do need five, uh, twelve more feet?
No, ma'am, we could, yeah, they, they know about the lengthening.
Oh, the length, yeah, that's the only thing we're asking.
Well, then the setbacks on the back.
My only concern is that if her neighbor...
Sister.
Sister, no.
No longer.
No longer sister, it's a neighbor now. She gets mad at you, she doesn't wanna build, then, and sells it, and that person's got to agree to what you agreed to. Is, do we need to get some kind of documentation that...
No, it's already settled. We grandfathered in, if you're in the footprint, you can go buy it.
Okay.
Now, the only thing she's doing different, they're choosing, the only reason they're here now, they're extending that house to the rear.
Yes, sir.
But the lot is a hundred and fifty foot wide, and it totally meets every, everything. So the person, Joe Frank, that buys the lot, under your scenario, has no choice but to put back just what is being approved today.
And then they touch. So it's a good thing.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and I'm asking this because Deborah called me today and asked me about this. She wants to be sure that if this is approved... She wants to be sure that if this is approved for Unit A, that she gets the same approval for Unit B. Because now, if she goes outside of her footprint, she wants to make sure that she will get the same variance.
Well, she'll have to come, just like everybody's done here today. You don't call on the phone and say, "I need assurances."
I know, but again, you're, you know, the ones that we've approved so far, it was all of them. It was four together. It was three together. It was two together, so...
All we got is one, though, Gina.
Yeah, that's right.
All we got.
But I did, I told her I would say it because she wanted that to be totally...
What we're doing is making it where it's... And we're going to have, eight-one, we're going to have that firewall.
Yes, sir. That, that's required by Florida Building Act.
I still haven't located the, the drawing that shows what's today being proposed.
Lindsay has to be in official set. It's two sets of drawings. I, I didn't want to separate it because that was a whole set, so...
All right. Why don't we, for your motion, keep it simple? If your, your motion is to approve the variance, have it, have the approval of the variance that's shown on the... These are A3 engineering approved drawings dated March 20th, 2020.
Okay, back to the table. We, here we are, more discussion, questions, or motions, based on terms. As far as recognizing justice. Okay, we're going to try this. I know that we approved the variance under A3 engineering, from March 26th, is that what was that?
March 20th.
20th.
Please add the word zero lot line.
Zero blah blah. Now, George, do you have that motion? Do you, do you have the motion?
Why don't we change the motion? The, the drawing is going to muddy the whole thing. That's showing a two-foot setback. Just say, so we're approving a, a zero-foot side setback, and then extending, allowing extension to the rear of it. Do we know that amount?
Just hit this approximately 12 feet.
All right, approximately 12 feet.
Give it a shot, George. Too much, there's all south Georgia water. Okay. Start all over again. You don't need to, you didn't get a second, so you can restart.
Motion would be to approve a variance allowing a zero-foot side setback, extending 12 feet further to the rear of the property.
Make a motion we approve the zero side setback, with 12-foot extension in the rear. Okay, one second. You have a motion, that's settled. Any other questions? Call the roll please.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
Mr. P?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Pollak?
Yes.
If the other lady wants the same thing, tell her, give it to her before we ever give it to her.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just like, it's not helpful. Okay, move it on. Uh, St. Joe Town District 42, you didn't develop, roll.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Um, and to be here next year, honestly, we are back with application number two under our approved PDB that was adopted back in, before all this craziness started. Um, so we're coming in now with Phase One of the townhomes. If you remember, we had about 160 townhomes approved as part of the PDB. Um, Phase One is the entry road and the first right, so it turns the corner right there. Um, and Chris Jordan is here, and he can go into all the technical details. And we're happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
All right, thank you, Bridget. Um, as Bridget mentioned, this is Phase One of the, the approved townhomes for, in the PUD is approved. Um, incorporates seven standalone buildings with six units per building. A total number of units of 42 units of the 160 that were incorporated in the PUD. Um, the, uh, the stormwater is provided through a combination of ponds. There's a dry pond between the townhome units and the Highway 98 right away. And there is a wet detention pond tucked away here in between the webands. The total project area, including all tie-in grates and disturbed earth, is 8.26 acres. We have, like I said, 42 units. Um, this also includes a lift station for collection and transmission of the wastewater. Um, the, it includes dumpster pad for garbage and a mail kiosk for mail delivery. This was all part of the planning and development study, which covered water capacity and sewer capacity. And this was within the existing limits for the, the capacity for the city. So there's no issues with any of that. We have the entrance coming in, and then stuff out for the future, uh, things.
Hang on a second, just hang on a second. Well, Rock, thank you, you're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, no worries. Um, we have an extension for the future second phase of the townhomes, which will be a separate development order application presented to the city um, in both locations here and here. In this location, we're proposing a temporary gravel cul-de-sac for turnaround of vehicles. And that is kind of the high points, but are you willing to answer any questions you may have, any concerns?
Okay, caution. And/or, but... The main river entrance is from that here.
Correct. That is correct.
West of the existing boat ramp entry road, so this entrance is totally separate from boat ramp and apartment.
Yeah, just to, just to give, just to give some general bearings. Uh, the existing boat ramp road and the entrance road for the, the first phase, the apartments, is located here. If I can get that right, here. And the entrance for this phase is located here, so it's on the other side of Salt Lake.
Did anything ever come out in DOT and requesting the new boat ramp?
We are waiting on our engineer. Um, we are putting together a proposal for us to do, um, pursue the permit for the, curb cut for the secondary boat ramp access.
Correct. Yeah, we're going to be kind of informational gathering, uh, stage, uh, to kind of see what, what kind of effort that's going to be required um, to drive the scope for the proposals we can look forward with that design.
Are you still planning June, starting back here, or those are plans to start two halves?
Yeah, so, so we are in the process of, um, we've got to do a closer, um, that's an application, the FEMA. So that has been signed off by everybody, and my understanding that's been submitted um, or we're financing right now. So we anticipate that we can start with the site work back here in Phase One this summer. Um, and then all that's dependent on getting some of those other things lined up. So, um, I think that our engineer had already been out to collect some survey data in that area, so you may have seen someone out, if that was what was going on there. And then, um, once we get all that information together and finalize the scope, we can move forward with that. And that's something that, um, we would go ahead and start as soon as we're fully permitted.
Okay, thanks. I was looking at the topo yesterday. Uh, from the road, the topo rises up pretty steeply. And I didn't, if, if all that stuff is really small, I couldn't tell what actual range is going to be compared to what the existing topo is. We're going to cut that down soon, is that correct? Do you want us to add dirt through some of the areas?
Um, there are, there, there is a ridge running through the middle of the property, probably what you're referring to with it rising. Uh, that bridge, we, there is a proposed cut for that bridge, so...
Do you know how much cut that is?
Um, let's see, I've got an existing elevation at the peak of about 19, and the finished floor elevation, so that's right about here.
Yeah.
And the finished floor elevation of that townhome unit is 1675. I'm going to apparently run some copies. Uh, but now that's just on that ridge. For, uh, for the other portions, it arises here and then kind of falls off to the back, falls off to the side. Uh, there actually is some proposed fill. Um, a lot of that driven by, uh, the, the new ordinance regarding finished floor elevations and, uh, and flood zone elevations.
Okay.
So it's kind of a mix. Portions are cut, portions are filled.
So we're going to, we're going to trim three feet off of that, maybe some slots to the back, or a little like this?
Correct, yeah, it's just going to kind of be redistributed throughout the...
But the height, I was trying to ask the thing, the height is... I don't see anything from the...
Any other questions?
What they talked about when they, the first time they talked? I mean, I don't see, I didn't see anything different.
No, no, yes. So the whole point of us getting the PDB plan approved was that it allowed us to, um, come in with smaller projects within that. But our intention is that at some point, this will be fully developed out in accordance with this plan that was previously adopted.
You should also expect to see a plaque to approve at some point in the future before the individual pieces will be sold off to homeowners. This is really the approval step to allow the roads and the dirt mower to proceed.
All right, are there any other questions? They're here, live and well for us to ask, so, all right. So then, any, there's no other questions, Chair will entertain a motion.
What do we call this?
St. Joe Town District, or... Town Home District, Town Home. St. Joe Village, Unit Development Order.
All right, okay. I make a motion to approve the St. Joe Town District 42, Minutes Development Order.
So, now, motion is settled. Any further questions, comics, all roll please.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Pollak?
Yes.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
All right, thank y'all for coming. While you're here, I want to mention for everyone, if we haven't sent it, we will soon be sending a letter. Never mind. That's requesting the boat ramp extension land, that we talked about. The additional three-and-a-half acres?
Yes.
And, and the additional 10-year extension on the list.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just want you to know we're going to do it then.
All right.
And then obviously, with the files, she has to iterate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all, appreciate it. Number six, Order 743. If you open a public hearing, if there are discussion or comments on Order 743, and if you would, Maureen, just, if you've done, just for the record, a brief overlay of what 743 is.
Yes, sir. Mayor, the council, right after the storm, allowed for homes to go back within the existing footprint. And that was very key to developing on townhome units where there were four, five, six, eight, seven, eight, nine, ten townhomes that were literally wall-to-wall with a, um, with a shared wall, and many with a shared wall again. We inherited that. There probably was not a land use that allowed that when it, or there may not have been land use when that happened, but we inherited that after the storm, that we had all these 25 to 15-foot wide parcels that could not be built back on. So the council decided if you had a home on a parcel that was below what was permitted today, because we have a seven-and-a-half foot setback on your side of property lines. If you have a 15-foot wide lot, and you do seven-and-a-half feet, seven-and-a-half feet, your hands just clap. There's nothing in between. If you have a 25-foot lot, and you do seven-and-a-half feet, seven-and-a-half feet, now you're only allowed a 10-foot home. So those parcels became generally unbuildable unless the council approved to allow to go back within the existing footprint. So that was step one. Step two was, a lot of these homes might have only been 40 feet in length, and if they wanted to add just one more foot to the front or one more foot to the back, it required a variance, because you did not meet the existing footprint. That then had one more level of complication. Within tourist residential, your impervious area permissible was 50%. Typically, these lots are 100 feet long, 15 feet wide. If you had a home that was 50 feet long on a 100-foot wide lot, you already had 50% impervious, which meant you could no longer do a driveway, you couldn't do a sidewalk, you couldn't even do a stoop, because you were over your impervious area. The city had granted a whole series of variances, and once you grant too many variances, you basically put a hole in your code. So in order to fix the code, we made the code where this is actually permissible. The first step in making it permissible was allowing the impervious area to go from 50% to 85%, which allows people to have a stoop, then a driveway, and things like that. So this ordinance, number 743, that's a long story to give you a short answer. All it does is increase the impervious area from 50% to 85%, which allows you to develop on the property with enough impervious area to make it buildable.
That increase only applies in high-density residential land use category, if it's also zoned townhome district. And that zoning is something we would consider creating on the next one.
And this is the second reading. It has been before the council, before. It's been through the planning board. Uh, the planning board approved it, and the council approved it. And then we took sections of this and sent it off to the state, and the state just says... They don't ever approve things, they just don't disagree with it.
They have no comment. I'm sure everyone understood that. Okay, so, public hearing is over. For those that want to comment on Order 743 changing, in essence, as was just stated, the impervious surface. Okay, no comments. Move it to the table. Close the public hearing. Again, this is for second reading, so if there's any questions or comments, Chair will entertain either oral motion, read Order 743, or file a...
Thank you, Mr. Reed, Order 743, right now.
Second, motion second. Mr. Lindsey?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida, amending the City of Mexico Beach Comprehensive Plan, future land use element to create an exception to the impervious surface limit within the high-density residential future land use category for the properties that are zoned townhome district, providing for repeal, separability, and providing an effective date.
Right. Your motion to adopt?
My motion to adopt Order 743.
Second. Motion second. Call the roll please.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
Ms. Pollak?
Yes.
Okay, that leaves us in the Order 744. I'm hesitant to ask you to give a little short definition of that.
But this one is, this one is much more simple, by the way.
But, but I am willing to do that.
Uh, Mayor, this allows us to create a subcategory within tourist residential to have townhomes. Now, this is the second step, and there will be a third step. And that third step is where we actually call out every individual lot that we're going to do this on, notify those landlords and the general public that we're doing that, and then have an ordinance, so we'll have two more readings, and then we will be done with this entire process.
And this creates a district. We're going to put properties into the district next. We didn't wanna do that during the COVID situation because we didn't wanna make too many people feel like they need to come to these public hearings to talk about their piece of property. But this sets up everything for them.
It also gives us, because some of these properties are gonna be sitting around here a long time, it'll give the building department a great tool for somebody ten years from now to say, you know, what'd y'all do back there? Here's my property, and if it's in there, then it'll tell them exactly what they can do. If they're one of these little townhome properties. Or give us as the city of the, you know. All right, we'll open the public hearing for order seven forty-four. If there's any questions or comments from the public, please let your voice be heard. There is none, close the hearing, come again to the table for a motion to read order seven forty-four or tie law.
Make a motion to read order seven forty-four, we have our honor.
Second, we have a motion second. Lizzy, please, move the table.
An ordinance of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida, amending the land development code to create the townhome district zoning category, allowable only within the high density residential future land use category, providing development standards allowable uses, revivitated uses, and other development standards applicable to the townhome district zoning category, provided for codification, repealing ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, provided for severability, and an immediately effective date.
Thank you. Motion to adopt?
Make a motion to read, adopt order seven forty-four.
Second, we have a motion second, all the way please.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Paul?
Yes.
Moving on, resolution twenty, dash over nine, Soft Creek Crossing, change order number four. Uh. Is, are we gonna have anyone from Newbury or Compton, D C?
We can, if needed, she is available by phone, if you would like, we're just, again, trying to keep.
Okay, but, but as we move out of this, Josh will be here?
Most definitely, yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, so we have resolution twenty-nine, if everyone has seen, have you seen that?
I, I have a question whenever it's time.
It's timed now.
Okay. We went from, uh, first, I guess I'll say the original contract price was a million nine whatever, and it was later changed to decrease by two hundred sixteen thousand to one seven roughly. Uh, so, um, they have gone down in the price, which we appreciate, for whatever reason, I guess it was, became clearer what needed to be bid on. But this increase, um, we had milling that was going into this area, and, and from what I read, uh, the area was damaged worse or was, I don't know, it wasn't really clear why. Uh, well, we went from five dollars per square yard to forty-one dollars per square yard. So millings, my understanding of millings is limited, but um, I, I think it's what you grind up from the asphalt road to use, okay? So, I, I've laid hundreds of thousands of square yards of asphalt and put in base and everything in my own young career. So I'm familiar with all this, but, and I don't know why, I'd like to have some kind of reason why it went from five dollars to forty-one dollars a square yard, just. I mean, it kind of shows you where on its back the area and all that, but it doesn't really, it's not very clear about why all of a sudden it, it went to such an expensive material when they had priced it at a five dollar material per yard. That's, that's a huge increase from a paving standpoint.
My understanding, not being the engineer, but my understanding of this was, the area that is highlighted in blue was scheduled to be milled and resurfaced.
Okay.
When they went in there, it wasn't something that they could mill and re-surface because it had all washed out. So they actually had to bring it back up to grade, put the subbase, the base, and put the asphalt. So it went from a simple, mill the top of the asphalt and put another three-quarter inch of asphalt on top of it, to actually taking the area, grading it, and everything else. So it, it, it was not as simple as they thought and they didn't see it until the end of the project. Outside of that, you, I will have to call, uh, Gina to get more detail.
Well, it does say in here that it's, you can see there that twenty-six dollars in base oh six, I, I don't know what that means. And then the type B, fifteen dollars a yard, so obviously they're adding. I, I don't, I didn't know what that meant, but I, it was clear that they were adding.
That's them adding the base.
Adding, adding more to it than what they originally intended were, which is, and that's just milling at five dollars.
Well, the square yardage went down from two thirty to two seventeen, and the type B, that's, that's gotta be, it's less than the twenty-six dollars, so it's gotta be the dirt or something that's used as base. And I understand you gotta, you gotta put it in, you gotta do it on lifts and compact it and that, and then the base, you know, oh six, I don't, I'm assuming that's the stone, I don't, do you, can you tell Gina?
Optional base group, see, that's, that's a DOT option, if it's either four or six inches thick base, it can be lime rock or, or, uh, mill asphalt or something, but it's an optional base group that DOT has that it gives that specifies thickness and L V R.
Okay, so, so the base is six inches thick?
It'll be whatever that optional base group six, it's either four or six inches for base group six.
Well, for a, for a roadway like that in this kind of area right here, I can't imagine you need to do less than six inches.
What, what road is that?
This is right as you make the curve going across Soft Creek, where.
Okay, yeah, I would assume you would, you would be looking at between six and eight inches of base.
Yes.
If I'm not looking at, I don't know anything about the design, but.
And so type B, you're, you mean what type B is?
Type B stabilization, that's the sand clay mix.
Yeah.
That you see going in the road, that's the subbase.
Right, okay, all right, so which is what I thought, but.
Um, it sounds to me, just listening, I don't know anything about it, just maybe if I can help, it sounds like they thought maybe they could mill and resurface it, but when they saw the shape of the road, mill and resurface went to removing the road, adding new, new subbase, uh, lime rock base and asphalt.
So, and, and, all right, how familiar, so these, type B and base oh six, that includes the asphalt going back?
Asphalt, no, that's, the asphalt was on top of the optional base.
So this is all preparatory for the asphalt, and the asphalt is gonna come out of the original contract, is that the way everybody sees that?
If the asphalt was already in the project, it wouldn't have to do the.
So what we're doing is fixing underneath it. Okay, well, like I said, I appreciate the fact that they went down in their bid originally, but I also at the same time would like to know that I could put it in place for twenty-six dollars per square yard, charge that. That's pretty high. A whole load, a whole truckload of, uh, of fifty-seven stone is about seven, eight hundred bucks. And that's a lot of yards, except four inches, so anyhow, that's my two cents, sorry.
My idea is it didn't scroll in, when you saw it, it wasn't there, the pipe and all was gone, I don't know how they missed it. When the, I mean, then you know you couldn't go in there and just lay the asphalt like that, and then it took the pipe out.
Right.
I think they just, my opinion, they missed.
And they're.
And they, that's my opinion, without asking anybody any questions, and the, Newbury would say, Bob, you should have did here, but they ain't, so.
Well, again, they've been generous, they, they kept their heart right on the first bid, they came down a lot of money. And so that makes me think that they're being honest and straightforward, which gives them credibility for this change for me. I did, I just wanted to bring up, that's a lot of money for some of that.
Mario, do you know if the fifteen and twenty-six dollar rates are from something else in the contract?
It's a unit.
Sorry, so that's, we're borrowing that unit cost from somewhere else in the contract. Is that correct?
Yes. Typically, typically speaking, it's, it's a unit. They, they give you a lump sum, and typically they give you unit costs, so that's, again, not being Newbury, not looking at the contract right now, being asked a question here, I would say that unit costs are typically already in the, in the contract, so I, I don't see them doing this twenty-six dollars as a new number, this should already be in the contract.
Well. You know, I'm not trying to be a pain in the rear here, um.
And Josh's answer is, it is correct. Optional base six is eight inches of lime rock.
Okay, so, I'm just saying, that's a lot of money, so in, for the future, whenever, if we do another project, you know, um, of course, we put all this up for bid, correct?
It is.
Well, all went up for bid, is that what all, I guess all of them are getting that much money to do asphalt paving now?
Yes, sir.
Maybe I should have stayed in the paving business, but that's pretty expensive.
I mean, maybe that, assuming those unit prices were already in our contract, and maybe that those were just particularly high unit prices and there wasn't much of that in the job originally, but it sounds like those, those unit prices are pre-established in the contract.
Okay, well, there's, there's nothing to be worried about, I'm just saying it's pretty expensive.
Okay, other comments? I don't disagree. Do we have, uh, we need a resolution to approve? In essence, what we did quite say as much as we thought. But, uh, do I have a motion to read resolution twenty dash over nine?
Make a motion to read, read resolution twenty dash over nine.
Is there a second? There's no second?
I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second, we need. I, I would like to make sure when these types of things are here, if somebody's Newbury. Now, I, I, I.
Yeah.
We, we have, we, we have, if they're gonna put them in here, they need to be able to, and I know, I understand why he's not here. But henceforth, there's room, there's room for it. So, uh, we have a motion second. Any other questions, any other comments? Lizzy, can you read the resolution, please?
A resolution of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida, approving a change order to the city's agreement with R B M Contract and Services LLC to make a repair to a nearly a mark for milling, estimated two hundred and thirty square yards, suggested measurement two hundred and seventeen square yards, increase in cost seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Right. I want, I should have asked for a motion to adopt, because you really don't have to read that adopt, but Lizzy, I did. Can I get a motion to adopt resolution twenty dash over nine?
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty dash over nine.
Is there any opposition to that?
And they put them out?
No, it's, we've already. Do, anybody check that?
I will. If you're gonna let them, just somebody to get here next time.
Well, I, I, I'm.
I'm hoping.
Well, there you go, I, I mean, I think, I mean, you know, we're used to that, and I think the daily things that we're, have questions about, so.
And, and again, just, just something I can say, I mean, I'm not trying to be hard to deal with, but I, I think that we going forward should be really careful about how much we spend for some of this kind of stuff.
We should have the right to ask those questions, that question, for that question.
Right.
In this case, uh, I feel, I'm like you, I felt comfortable enough to, while I don't know about the price right now, I think that there's enough justification for what we did, the way we did.
Well, they used it out of contract, we can't really argue that point, but I think going forward, when we negotiate again, hopefully we can. I don't know, maybe that's going right to my.
It's, it's a bid, you do not negotiate the other pieces, once the bid is accepted, whatever, and, and again, those unit prices were part of the bid form, so if it is, so that twenty-six dollars is in the bid form, and that way if there's deducts, it's twenty-six dollars, and if there's add, it's twenty-six dollars, so it swings in both directions. And I'm assuming that the original two hundred and something thousand dollar credit was based on the same bid form, so again, those are numbers cut in both directions.
Right.
Okay. Lizzy, you got all that?
Yes.
Okay. Audit firm selection number nine, Mario, let's hear it. Well, technically we did on a resolution, so I think we're good that it, we had a motion to adopt in a second, so it's, that really should have been what the motion said, so.
Are we good with that, Mr. Kirk? Does anybody oppose that resolution?
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Um, the audit firm is something that, uh, council has agreed would be a good idea, mainly because we went through a hurricane, we've had an auditing firm that has worked for the City of Mexico Beach over the years, but our year really changed. Prior to the hurricane, our standard year was approximately four million dollars. This audit, this year with the hurricane is probably pushing a forty million dollar budget. So it's a lot more work, and it's a lot more specialized work. There will be a single phase audit, a double phase audit, and other technical terms that are outside of my expertise. So, what we did was we took the R F D Request For Proposal that Panama City Beach had just done last year. Uh, we changed the name to Protect the Innocent, and we put it out on the street. We were very thankful that we received, um, six proposals that came in. When we went through the proposals, one of the requirements was that the firms had to have ten years worth of experience auditing, uh, cities, and had to do the same level of special audits for hurricanes, once you reach over seven hundred thousand dollars worth of grants, it's a simple phase audit. So they had to have that level of expertise. Two of those firms did not have that level of expertise, so two were called out, which left us with four. Once we graded all four, and I say we, not me, it was the mayor, it was Keith LaMasters, the accountant that we had working for us, and then Holly, uh, White, who is the city clerk slash accountant for Panama City Beach, we had those three, uh, reviewed the proposals. They, when they looked at them, they said, you know, number one was C R I, number two was James Moore, number three was Warren Abern. They graded those pretty much in, in that ranking to make sure that we were looking at the most qualified. After they graded the most qualified, we then opened sealed envelopes that had pricing. Within the sealed envelope that had pricing, the lowest qualified bidder was James Moore. The second lowest price was C R I. There was a twenty thousand dollar a year roughly difference between the two. So even though James Moore was ranked second quality wise, and again, keep in mind, I, I say second, they were all very, very close. Please do not say, I don't want that to be inferred that they weren't as qualified as, as C R I. But the price clearly made a big difference. And I will say that one of the reasons that we ranked, uh, James Moore a little bit less was they're out of Tallahassee, which is about a two hour drive versus C R I is in Panama City Beach, was about an hour drive. Outside of that, both had very equal experience, uh, in doing this type of work throughout this region. Um, James Moore does mainly from Tallahassee to the east. They've just now got the contract for Lynn Haven, so they are now working in Lynn Haven, and if you all agree with the audit committee's recommendation of James Moore being the most qualified, uh, lowest bid, then we will bring them on board. The contract for five years is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars rough order. They start off at about fifty-two thousand, and then they drop down to forty-eight thousand, and then they drop all the way down into thirty thousand, and then they get a little increase on the fifth year, so that's why C R I was sixty-two thousand every single year, they had a varying price. And again, that's not atypical for auditors, because they come in, they get to know you, they develop a program, that year's the most expensive, the second year, they become a little more efficient, the third year were more efficient, and then with time, money starts to cost a little bit more. So, that's, again, a long. So that's, again, a long story for a bunch of work that was done by a good group of people, so thank you.
So we need to officially accept James Moore as our auditing firm. Reprisation from the audit selection committee was James Moore, representing that to the council today for approval. Is there a motion or any questions?
Well, that's all we got, the council. Uh, like mostly, uh, approve James Moore and country. Uh, all right.
Kind of make a suggestion. Could we instead do a motion to approve the, the ranking in case for some reason we don't reach contract with James Moore? We have backup available. So James Moore ranked first, CRI is ranked second, Warren Abert's ranked third.
Makes sense.
Uh, I don't think we want just all the back to government number two. We might want to negotiate again or something. I don't, I mean, that's a big dollar difference. If you set the ranking and that, that tells people we're gonna go, James Moore says, look, I messed up something here.
That's, that's fine. Uh, the statute only requires us to.
I just, I come from doing that, Dick, that's all.
But I, I have very little doubt we'll reach a contract with the first ranking, so it should be fine.
All right, motion is to accept, excuse me, Lindsay, the motion was to accept James Moore. Was there a second, counsel? I didn't, what, a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, call the roll, please.
Mary Cathy?
Yes.
Mr. Pete?
Yes.
This call, yes. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, moving to number, our last item, this is reports, uh, Nick, you're up first.
Yes, uh, I've had an update on a project that has been going on a long enough that some of the on the board probably have to let her about it. And, uh, it has to deal with the old civic center property. The civic center was destroyed by Hurricane Michael. And about six months ago, the council at the time decided that we should move towards selling that property. There wasn't a clear use in the land for it. And, um, it's a little bit of a tangled history of deeds and title there. So, um, there was a process that got underway to figure out what did the city own, what area would make the most sense to sell. And, uh, we also wanted to amend the plat there so that we could sell it just as a platted lot instead of a meets and bounds description of a hundred different little angles and distances. The reason for that is we're, we're trying as a city to start relying more on our plats instead of just creating new descriptions over the top of those plats. So, um, the culmination of a, a good bit of title review and the survey work passing around shows what makes the most sense, I believe, uh, for the city to proceed on, assuming we still want to sell the property. The, uh, the big question, not to get too bogged down in the details, is which, do you not want to sell that property? Like you don't, there's no uses, who you can put it to. But what you're looking at is a, it's three pages. The first page is the, the Dewberry survey process. Like a blue line showing, a blue line shows what we would, uh, intend to go forward and sell. The first replat lots that match that blue line, and it's, uh, if you look inside that blue, you'll see a speckly, uh, outline. It's, it's basically a long skinned rectangle with a, a little piece on the end, so it's sort of like a fat out. That's the footprint for the old building. So what you'd be selling is basically, uh, from the southern footprint of the building, uh, going beyond that footprint and, and back, I don't know, that's about, uh, it looks like about twenty-five, thirty feet beyond the old building. Some of the back and forth was trying to figure out if the city actually owned more property than we ought. Eventually, we determined that the city did not. So that's the footprint available itself. The way that this was intended to be done was that a new user could rebuild the same amount of square footage without having to ride in parking because the, the shopping center there has shared parking, and we wouldn't be selling the parking spaces. The city would be keeping those to continue using the shared parking. So that's the, the update on, on where we are now. Dewberry would provide a replat document for you to approve, and assuming at an upcoming board meeting, then, uh, we would move forward with selling the property. In the past, we've used a realtor to just list this property, we'd probably do that again. I don't know what this property is gonna be for, it's, it's an interesting property because it's not very large, but it also doesn't require.
Just a little old background, at the time, the council, uh, at that time, checked our entry towards getting a, a government complex on, on P D eight was back here. So that was just. There was no interest in thinking that that would be quote civic center worthy moving forward. That had, trying to get us scattered all around us having one complex, and that's, I believe, I don't remember the wall, it's, I'll be, I don't remember, it doesn't matter. But it saved us a while, we did to this point. So I, I told Dick that I thought it was important that we discuss this to see if the flavor of the council is that, is this still something we want in the market or not? Because we have to change places here. And it's taken us a while to get to a, something we look at to see what we have to sell. Well, we're not going to use it, let's tell. Well, that was still my, I mean, I, I don't see that as a civic center, you know, for our city moving forward.
This is not in the parking.
Well, the location, the size, the, it just, it's, it's just not, I mean, you know, if, if Mike hadn't come along, it would serve me well, then we, it would be great. But if we're gonna look to, to move a complex, I think that we, our energy should be on what we're gonna do back here and make us. That's, that's, that's still my fault. But I thought it was important that everyone, if the consensus is to move forward with that, then I think we, what's left to do, Dick? I'm, I'm a little bit, like I say, I'm, I'm sure you mentioned the replats. We have to get this platted now, I mean, recorded, is that what you mean?
Yes, so this is already plated, but the, the lines on the platted don't match what you're looking at. So we'd be getting, Dewberry gave us, it's gonna look like, so, plus an extra signature lines on that. Uh, a document that will change the outline of the platted lot. We'll prove that council level. And then that will allow, when we go forward to sell the property, all we'll do is it'll just be sold by referencing the lot number.
Lot, lot you.
Okay.
So, so essentially, what we did was we, we changed that one angle line primarily back to run the front, so we could save all that parking area.
And we cut off some of the, whatever part of the property that was originally part of the platted lot, although I think that was already heated away.
Okay. Yeah. Is this, am I, is this seventy-five feet wide? I, I've had a hard time believing what I'm hearing.
It says seventy-five.
Yes, same, same, it's quite, I, I, nobody, I, I moved this one.
Seventy-five, that's not.
Hundred and five.
Okay. That's right.
I was.
This is, the deed's in front of the city, so that's, that's, does that go with the fish park? I mean.
No.
No, that deed's, do that flow to the park?
No, it's, uh, that part of. It's, it's well, yeah, that part of the saltwater dragon park.
Right above on the second picture, right above North Thirty First Street.
Yeah, I, I assume that what we talked.
It's got to be the sea around.
A good line, man.
But we already have everything in the process to keep moving towards the replat and sale, so you don't need to vote on that.
I did change it, but I thought I wanted everybody to look at, and if there was, you know, if, if we didn't, then. So is it consensus to just keep working forward, getting it replatted?
I, I think so.
For me, yes. Okay. Sharon, you good with that?
Yes.
Okay, then Nick, we're seeing all, what's, uh, who, Mark, that follows you or the Nick, who, who, who keeps the momentum going here?
Either one of us. I'm, I'm waiting on, uh, Jonathan Dewberry to return, uh, some, some information on.
Is it safe to, now, we, we, we came to term with Dewberry for a price, six thousand dollars.
Roughly six thousand.
It is, I mean, is that part of, does that include what we're to get?
It, it should. Um, but most of the, this delay, most of it wasn't really tied to Dewberry doing additional work. It was slowed down, it's getting title work and trying to work through. Initially, the title work showed that we owned less property than we thought we did, and worked through that with title company, and we've got a very clear description of what we own.
Is, is some of this FEMA reimbursable for, for, uh, meaning the work performed, or is that?
The time I've been putting into it, I've been putting under a FEMA, FEMA reimbursable matter because this is all about redeveloping this destroyed parcel. I don't know about the Dewberry.
I know Dewberry would not do it.
My time has, at least I've been, I've been coding it that way.
We want to y'all move that, pass that to whoever Dewberry needs to get the thing.
How is this property selling?
Uh, I think it's general commercial.
It's general commercial, it's part of, it's, it's general commercial, and it's owned as part of the shopping center, which allows for that common park.
And that's, that's the most attractive thing about this to hire. It's difficult in the city to find property where you can build something commercial and have adequate space to need parking apartments. This parcel won't have parking apartments. It won't, as long as they don't build something larger, it'll, it's everywhere.
They're within footprint. Okay, you, you have others, anything else on the project, or?
No.
Nope. All right, Mr. Mark, you're up.
Mayor.
Uh, there was a public notice that the city attorney pointed out to us on Friday, and we've done a little bit of research on it. Um, but before the Bay County Commission on the nineteenth, which is next Tuesday, there will be a P U D application that is before them. I have a copy of it. I believe I sent out an email earlier today. If I didn't, I will after this meeting, but this is the P U D that is being, uh, proposed to the county. In essence, I'll go to the key drawings, which is this one. The Saint Joe parcel that we just discussed was over here on the east side. Tindall is over here on the west side, and what they're proposing to do is do commercial with a little bit of residential on the north side of ninety-eight, just outside of the city limits. So this is outside the city limits of Mexico Beach in the county that has the potential to, uh, develop some commercial land.
And Saint Joe Park?
This is not Saint Joe Park.
Okay, it's across from Sugar Saints.
Across from Sugar.
Okay.
But you can go to the commission. I have started some discussions with Bob Mike, and I understand the ins and outs of this. Uh, we're looking at, you know, who pays impact fees, who's responsible for water and all those things. But keep in mind, this is just the P U D portion. They have yet to submit for development order, and during the development order, they will have to secure water and sewer from the City of Mexico Beach because we are the only provider for water and sewer in here. What's both being charged? The most you can charge is twenty-five percent over what you charge your residents, which is the agreement that you currently have for the south portion.
They can't charge more.
Mister.
Well, the agreement for the south side, we also, it sets forth that we claim impact fees. So it's not an ongoing increase in their, their water and sewer rates, but it's an upfront chunk of money to pay for infrastructure.
No tax place.
No tax place.
Zero. Speaking of impact fees, I mean, is now the time to say, what did we do about that? And are we gonna update that, our impact fees?
I think that would be a great thing, if we could separate it from that, that, that would be a good thing to do.
Do you have other, or you have anything?
I, only because there's a person in the audience, there is a meeting, uh, that is scheduled, Lance, is that tomorrow? What is it, the meeting that you have scheduled is that tomorrow or Thursday?
That's to, that's Thursday.
Thursday. There is a meeting on Thursday to, uh, discuss the, the parcel over here at the end of the twenty-first of January.
I'm sorry, that is tomorrow, that is.
Four, four-thirty tomorrow.
Wake him up, Ken. A meeting, a meeting with who?
It's the director.
Oh.
Yeah. With us.
What, all right, a meeting with, with, uh, with Gina tomorrow? And to discuss some, some other things on the area, so that'll clear that, that'll clear that question up. As far as the, the buildings, which building is what?
Again, it's a very complex issue, if you want me to get into it, it's condemned and all, all that stuff, so we're, we hope we work that out tomorrow.
Okay. What else? You got a pile of papers to do.
Yes, sir, that, that was all, that was all of those. Uh, I do have a good, a good news piece.
All right, well, let me start with here, then.
Our Mexico Beach Artificial Reef Association applied for a ninety-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollar grant. They received the grant, um, they worked with us, we put that, uh, project out to bid. The project came in with one bidder. That one bidder is the same group that has done almost all the other artificial reefs in the area. They were granted that contract, and if weather permits, this Friday, they will unload ninety-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars worth of artificial reef up in the Gulf of Mexico. So that is very good news. Um, they also had some bad news, which was they were denied something through Triumph, but they already had a match from the Saint Joe Company, and the Saint Joe Company was asked, would you be willing to take that match if you had on Triumph and put it on something else? And they said yes, so the Saint Joe Company has donated, I believe it's fifty thousand dollars to do some additional. So they will probably go back to the same group and add fifty thousand dollars more artificial reef to that same group, so they'll do another deployment later on in the season. So those are two deployments that have been worked through, um, through the Mexico Beach Artificial Reef Association, but they have to work through us in order to get access to the grant with Fish and Wildlife. So it's, it's a team effort that we've all been working on. And not in this meeting, because we still have the COVID thing going on, but in probably the next meeting, he would like to come in and, um, you know, just show his appreciation and some, announce some checks and monies that have come in, uh, through the Mexico Beach Association. So that was the last part.
Do we know where this is going? Did you mention it?
Yeah, he knows exactly where it's going, and it'll be publicized, I can't tell you before this, no kidding.
No, I mean, kind of, they, they run the area. What else you want to know?
I think we actually sent it, I think we actually wrote it and sent it later.
Oh, uh, I'm just, was curious, no. All right, thank you, Mr. Goss. Counsel, comments? Mark, you got any? Derek, you got anything?
I sure do, I got one thing.
Uh. The letters that we sent out to the people, to the county, I have got two that's going to stay in my. It's working, I own Piper, what's your, I've got two in my neighborhood, Chris, and then the van, the caller, seven, George, they're back. And then you'll turn it back. So send it out later.
Does work, I mean, it did in my.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I'm on that.
Yeah, okay, sir, I'll make sure, what's this one, I'm sorry. Did you play that? He said, when you gonna find us? Yeah, that was going out down that foot.
So it does work, and I really appreciate what Kent did.
Yeah, I did too.
She really did a long way to do it, and I, I was gonna thank her and everybody in the city, especially her right now.
Know what you got?
Um, kind of quickly, um, the stuff that's going up and down the road, you know, when we rub the walls, they do the walls pretty good, but those creepy crawly things that are two miles per hour? I talked to Lieutenant about today, they go two miles per hour, they will not get over them. And I've been behind fifteen or more cars just creeping up the road, and now we're in tourist season. I asked him, could we not give them a ticket for not pulling over occasionally, or how can we get them off? Because you know which ones I'm talking about, the guys up in the.
Manly.
Manly, yeah, and they're crawling, and it literally is going this fast.
Just pass it.
You can't, it's a W O line.
Well.
Huh?
Everybody has the.
Well.
I mean, construction.
Lieutenant said, he said you can't pass, it's a W O line, and I said, well, can we not tell them to, to get off the road? I mean.
Talk to the lieutenant. I don't know, I mean, I, you know, we're gonna be dealing with that for, we can't, but they can tell them that, we can't tell them to do that, the council can.
What, what I'm saying is, should we talk to the lieutenant and get, I mean, it's just, it's a really nuisance. When I, I would run my podcast through any more than a trigger. And I think those guys that got something that small should need to say it there.
Personal.
What else you got?
I was there.
You were gonna mention the, uh, impact fees.
Oh, yeah, impact fees, uh, we were gonna try and discuss raising those, was it since like, what, two thousand and four?
If, if we can, we can not use the word raising and do an impact fee, to know, to see whether they should go up or down.
Yeah.
That's expensive.
There, there isn't.
Impact fees, those are already expensive.
Those are expensive, but they can help.
They can help, well.
Well, we got a lot of building stuff going on, and we're, we're at pretty disorder.
Yeah, but those that are building, they're already, their impact fees are already paid, they're replacing it. They're not paying another impact fee.
Well, no, but not everybody's built the skeleton, I'm just saying. How much are those studies?
We, we would end up doing the R S A fees. Fee for the study, and again, typically, they're gonna be appropriated to some level of, you know, the city. So I can't tell you exactly how much, I'm trying to recall what we paid in Panama City Beach. I'm, I'm thinking it was forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars. And over there, keep in mind, when it raises, it raised the fire military, I mean, not military, it, it raised the fire impact fee from seventeen dollars to a hundred and seventy dollars. So all the future growth would have to pay that additional fee. I believe the, the, the three areas that grew the most, water and sewer pretty much paid the same, but police, fire, and parks and rec were the ones that, that were a major increase. But then again, it's for Panama City Beach. And the, the way that those studies work is they look at what the city is planning to do in its future. So if we were planning on building a stadium, they would take that into account, and then you would increase your military, your impact fees based on the fact that your goal is to build a stadium. And only as an example, that is not so recommended.
Hey, so essentially, it's, it's so much money that it wouldn't be worth doing really, probably? Is that what you're saying?
No, sir, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that, it, it is something that you need to take into account. But it is designed for future growth. If you don't plan on growing in the future, then there's no reason to do it. And again, the Saint Joe Development, the parcel that came over here to do the plat, those would be the ones that would be affected by an impact fee increase if it came to an increase. But again, it's based on what the city's plans are for.
And we, we've had this conversation a few times while I've been with the city. And the reason we have to do a study, it's pretty much so statutorily driven. You can't just say, well, we have rates, our rates are low, so we're gonna raise it five percent. You have to have factual justification to do the, the raises. And if you did it with your own staff, it probably wouldn't hold up, so that's why everybody gets a consultant. We, we've talked about doing this several times, but I, I've always had in my mind, we, we did, we'd think of at least twenty thousand dollars to do the study. And it would pay off eventually, but you gotta find the twenty thousand dollars, or thirty or whatever it's.
Okay. Dick? Sharon, you have anything?
Uh, I do, Al, uh, I wanted to acknowledge our water department and thank them for all of their efforts. Uh, there was a water leak behind my house that was back in the fifties or something that was put down there. They worked till nine thirty one night, trying to find it, and they finally found it, came back the next day and fixed the whole thing. And they were just very, very, well, I was very appreciative of all their effort.
I was shocked when that line, they, they told me about that line.
Oh, my goodness.
That line was killed, no, it wouldn't.
It's twelve feet down now.
I couldn't believe it.
And it's.
That was back when Henry was, he was the one that watered it.
Anyway.
I guess he buried it with a little bit of fire.
Yeah, he's, he's electrical conduits, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, they, 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 they got, break down.
Thank you for the representation. I've got one, you got anything else?
No, that's it.
And I've got one thing, and, uh, it's over the years, it's happened multiple times, and that's about our meeting time. To me, there's not a worse time to meet than one o'clock on the day. I'd like to see us meet at nine o'clock in the morning. Y'all have any objections to that?
I give up at five o'clock.
Oh, I know, but, but I mean, it's just so many communities, morning meetings are just a consequence, it's just not.
Yeah.
Odd, and, and people will say, I've heard about, one of the big arguments is, nobody will be here. We, we've proven that that's not the measure. The meeting time doesn't drive the series, what's on the agenda, what drives the series? And if, if there's, I'd like to suggest that we, we start meeting at nine AM instead of four.
I have no objection to that.
I have no objection, are, they, these guys are out here by what?
Yeah.
Oh, is there, is there any way to, they just staggered out with Gulf County?
I have no interest in Saturday, I don't agree with you. I don't know when they meet, but I'm not interested in doing that.
Okay.
I don't ever know when they got to.
I, I think his point is that it's at the same time.
What do you mean?
He's saying that it's at the same.
So if I was, I was saying here and there, I was kind of pick.
Oh, for you?
Just, just for, just for.
You called, wait, I misunderstood, you were quite opposite you.
So I'm, I'm thinking, I was asking about staggering. Staggering the weeks where it all falls the same time as a Gulf County meeting, so if I'm presenting something here and there, I want to pick, or not just need anybody.
Their, Gulf County's meeting is at nine AM on the second and fourth Tuesday.
Well, that's an hour, well, that's, that's, that's an eight-hour time, so you got an hour. I'm doing, I'm doing tonight. Everybody's doing that. Well, please, make that a pitch.
We have to bring a resolution to you, so we will.
Yeah, our, our, uh, it's like we have to do a resolution, but we can bring a resolution next meeting, we'll do the next meeting at one.
I'll be there. I, yeah, well, so, so next, did I mention one o'clock, maybe we'll have a resolution, is that what we're hearing?
That, that's right, okay.
What you got, Paul?
Got a question for you, boat ramp fees. What happens to the boat ramp fees, are they dedicated to the boat ramp or the boat?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can we not get a quarter potty of the boat ramp? In the last market, somebody's already used boat ramp twice, the personal.
That's a good point. If, if I make a phone call to M B A R A, they could pay to put a quarter potty in the boat ramp for the last couple of years. And I bet you they just forgot. They really, y'all probably don't mind, that's who paid to have that down, was M B A R A. I'm gonna ask them if they'll do it again, if not, we got a push-up, and I agree.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if you're aware, but Bay County put in a burn ban, we just showed it before, it's basically countywide. I don't mean on like burning, but in the limits of City, uh, City of Mexico Beach. But just be aware, if you see anything anywhere, feel free to call myself or, um, tell the sheriff's office, call my number, whichever you want. But there should be no burning going on in Bay County for the foreseeable future.
They got to the same point.
And as far as I'm aware, not yet, I haven't seen.
Gulf County just did it, I just got a, I just got a mail that they did.
It wasn't done until today, I haven't heard, so, yeah, okay.
Uh, Mayor, one last thing.
Come on.
We have hired a heat accountant, she started yesterday. So mommy, Crook is our.
So Robert over here in the, but we forgot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
She's busy, she's busy, I can tell you.
She, she is up to here, uh, building through our books.
Then you go over and say hello to.
So we got a crook for an accountant?
Yes, sir. Do you want a little bit of that?
Oh, you. Motion for a gentleman.
I've already signed.
Motion for a gentleman.
I made a motion for a gentleman.